I'm going to go ahead and call our meeting to order. Appreciate everybody here. We do have a quorum. All our board members are here except Mr. Gallegos, so we're trying to check and see if he's running a little late, but no one's heard from him. I'd like to ask Dr. Jerry Roach, Senior Pastor from Victory Christian Center, to offer our invocation.
Thank you, Max. I appreciate the opportunity to come and pray. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and for the opportunity to come together this evening in a spirit of cooperation, unity, and loving concern for the children of San Angelo. Father, I thank you that each person represented here has a genuine interest in meeting the needs of the children of our community. Father, we ask that your wisdom would be the guiding influence this evening as important decisions are made here, that the best interests of all children in San Angelo would be addressed. Father, we ask you for your guidance and wisdom and protection for our superintendent of schools and all the administrators, teachers, counselors, nurses, cafeteria workers, janitors, and all those who touch the lives of our children on a daily basis. I pray a special blessing upon those who are committed to providing an excellent education for this generation of children. May their lives be enriched and rewarded by the knowledge that the work they have chosen to do is pleasing unto you. In the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen.
Thank you again for inviting me and thank you all for the work and the service that you do for this community. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Roach. When I moved here 44 years ago, Dr. Roach was my dentist. He was my dentist for several years before he went into the ministry. He's been a great friend, and I really appreciate you being here, Dr. Roach. Good seeing you. He hasn't changed a bit. I started changing the color of my hair. All right, we don't have any of our elementary children or students that are going to school right now that we usually have to lead our pledges, so if everybody will stand, I'll lead the pledges tonight. I'd like to again welcome everybody for being here. As President of the Board of Trustees of the San Angelo Independent School District, my name is Max Parker, and I'd like to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's regular board meeting. I also welcome those who are watching the tape of this meeting on our public access channel, Channel 4. We appreciate your interest in our students. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, of the items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed at our earlier pre-agenda board meeting, our board workshop last week. As members of the SAISD Board of Trustees, we're here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, with that in mind, we have an item on every one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team an opportunity to do so. I will make certain that we give everyone an opportunity to speak on any item not listed on our agenda also. Additionally, prior to taking any votes, I will ask audience members if they would like to make any comments. Anyone wishing to make comments on any agenda item should do their best to limit their comments to five minutes. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become a part of the SAISD's permanent legal record. In order that the tape will adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also ask you, as I remind myself and my fellow board members, to please turn off or silence your cell phones. It's my pleasure to welcome you again to tonight's meeting. I thank you for taking time to join us this evening. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of our district. All right, with that introduction, we now will turn our meeting over to some of our administrators for recognitions. First have Whitney Wood and Molly Turk are up. Oh, all right, Farrah's going to go first. Dr. Gomez, all right.
That wasn't very fair, was it?
They tricked me.
Well, good evening, President Parker, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board. Sorry, I had to pause to make sure I had that right. Sorry for throwing you off on the recognitions. We're honored this evening. To recap, we know that we honored our Teachers of the Year at our district celebration, which you all attended back in April, but we want to highlight our overall winners for secondary and elementary Teachers of the Year. Before I do, I want to give Jack Wilcox a shout from the back. Sometimes we don't see Jack. He's always behind the scenes, but I especially want to send my appreciation to Jack and the entire communications team. Anytime we pitch an idea, they're always there and willing. So as part of our Our People Make the Difference campaign and hiring this year, we did a series of videos, which we shared with all of you in advance, of recruiting and hiring. And so this was our one chance to reveal with our overall winners. So our two winners did not know that this was really a secret to reveal that they won, and we won't have this opportunity again, but Jack and his magic, he just always has a way of capturing the story. And so we wanted you to see in live action again for a final time, and our viewers watching on Channel 4 will highlight our two. For our elementary overall winner, we have Mrs. Lena Rivera from Fort Concho Elementary. She's currently a second grade teacher, and we'll start with her, Mrs. Hopkins.
Relationship for me is by far the most important thing to do with our students. It's important that they feel loved, and in order for them to be successful in the classroom, they have to feel like you really care about them. My name is Lena Rivera, and I teach second grade at Fort Concho Elementary. As a teacher, we wear many hats: nurse, counselor, mathematician, scientist, cheerleader, and also referee. While all those roles are equally important, building a relationship has to come before all of those hats can be worn, really taking the time to get to know our students and know them on a personal level. This group of kids are very special to me. This is actually my second year with them. With COVID hitting at the end of last year and us not coming bad from spring break, I was blessed with the opportunity to teach this group of children for a second year. So I moved from first grade to second grade with these children, and just to be able to see the growth that happened from the beginning of first grade to now here at the end of their second grade year is just amazing. The magic moment for me is when you sit down with the child and they take what you've taught them, and they're able to put those together, and you see the little light bulb turn on, and they get it. They just get it. That's why I'm a teacher. It's my hope that my students will always remember the fun times we had together, all the things that we learned, all the things that made us grow, and I hope that what I said really sunk deep into their hearts and that they go out there and show kindness to the world and do all these wonderful things. At San Angelo ISD, our people make the difference.
Visit saisd.org to see how.
And next, we have our overall secondary winner, Mrs. Sylvia Graves. She works with our 18-plus program.
I absolutely love our students. I love building relationships with them, and I celebrate them every day because I see the things they accomplish.
Hi, my name is Brittany Kuzick. I'm the senior manager for the San Angelo Stock Show and
I absolutely love our students. I love building relationships with them, and I celebrate them every day because I see the things they accomplish. My name is Sylvia Graves. I teach the 18-plus vocational program for SAISD. Our program is designed to assist adult students with disabilities that are transitioning from high school to help them with employment and employment skills. Our ultimate goal in this program is for our students to develop independence, self-advocacy, self-determination. We are so grateful to be able to partner with a lot of great businesses and people in our community. Our students are able to go into those places and either volunteer or have a work experience that's paid, and we want them to have an independent employment. We've had one student hired at Shannon Hospital, and one student hired at the YMCA, and that spells success. That is just amazing to see them be confident and step into those roles. Students with disabilities have so many things that they can offer to be able to come in and see the students that we work with achieve small goals but are huge to them. It really gives me a lot of inspiration, and that's really what it's all about. It's about helping them to be as independent as possible, and I love that. I love it. At San Angelo ISD, our people make the difference.
Visit saisd.org to see how.
So that's just a recap of both of those overall winners. They have been working with our communications team, so both of their applications are being sent on to go beyond our region and, we hope, to the next levels. Also, you'll soon see this coming summer months, we will be displaying on the walls behind us all of our campus winners for Teacher of the Year. The two overall winners, their canvases will be a little bit larger, and then down when you enter in the front foyer, our 10 Employee of the Year overall winners will also display them with special recognition. We'd also like to highlight our principal that was, he was just recently recommended for a potential award, Mr. Joe Gondar. So we have a lot to celebrate in San Angelo ISD, and again, we're very appreciative of our communications team and all that they do to lift up our employees. I know from the human resource standpoint, they're a great partner. We couldn't do what we do without their help in their department. And wouldn't be doing proper credit if I didn't recognize our great partners at Concho Educators Credit Union, who work with us directly on Teacher of the Year. Thank you.
So wonderful to get a glimpse into the classroom and just really see how our people make the difference. So Mr. Parker, distinguished members of the board, and Dr. Detloff, we continue with our special recognitions this evening by honoring an outstanding community partner and supporter of public education and literacy, Junior League of San Angelo. This dedicated group of women leaders is committed to promoting volunteerism in San Angelo, and its purpose is exclusively educational and charitable. Junior League directly impacts the children of San Angelo ISD consistently through programs supporting and lifting up our students and families, like Food to Kids Deliveries, Student Closet, and Children's Literacy Project. Food to Kids Deliveries was a program started by Junior League in 2007 and is now led by the Concho Valley Food Bank, but with critical support for deliveries by Junior League members to the kids in our schools. This program gets nutritious food home with children for the weekends who need it most. Student Closet provides children and teens with quality clothing so they can be successful in various aspects of their lives. I have seen firsthand the confidence this can instill in our students so that they can focus on things like learning and growing. Children's Literacy Project focuses on children's literacy, and as a part of our San Angelo Reads Communitywide Literacy Initiative, we commend this program. This year, they partnered with the City of San Angelo Parks Division to install the city's first-ever Story Walk across the street from Unidad Park. The Story Walk features signs with book pages installed along a path, encouraging literacy along with health and fitness. So today, we recognize the Junior League of San Angelo for their partnership and continued
Go ahead.
Let's see. Thank you. I just want to make a quick comment and thank Junior League again for their service.
support of our San Angelo ISD students in so many ways. Tonight, we are honored to have joining us and accepting this recognition for Junior
The first community board that I served on as a volunteer was about 25 years ago, and
League President Stacy Graves, as well as Communications Chair Jana Thompson behind
that was the Junior League Advisory Board. And there I learned, I didn't do much advising.
the lens. Dr. Detloff, members of the board, and attendees, at this time, would you please help me recognize
I did a lot of listening and learning, but I realized what a great organization that
Junior League for all they do for our community, families, and students?
was and just the incredible amount of service that you guys do across the community.
Stacy, we would like for you to come forward as well for a group photo.
And so I just want to say thank you, and you're a great service organization, and we certainly appreciate your partnership.
And I know, speaking for the board, we are always appreciative of all of you do. So thank you, Junior League. Thanks for being here tonight. Hey, Molly.
Thank you. Now I'm on. Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board, tonight we are honored to recognize some outstanding community partners and supporters of San Angelo Reads, Atmos Energy, Diego's Burrito, Lone Star Beef, and donors who wish to remain anonymous. Atmos Energy's Diego Burritos, Lone Star Beef, and our anonymous donors have supported San Angelo Reads by providing us with books to gift to every one of our kindergarten, fourth, and fifth graders, totaling over 3,000 books, including two Hank the Cowdog titles and The Little Engine That Could. Their generous donations help us continue to inspire a love of reading in our students and community beyond what happens in our classrooms. Thank you for your support and generosity. Tonight, we're honored to have Rochelle Dittmore, Manager of Public Affairs with Atmos Energy, with us to accept the recognition on behalf of Atmos. Our other community partners were unavailable tonight, but they're thankful for the recognition that they're going to receive. Ms. Dittmore, Dr. Detloff, if you'd join us for a photo.
Community partners really have been instrumental in making San Angelo Reads a success, so we truly appreciate you all, and Molly's hard work and working together with them as well.
Thank you, Ms. Dittmore, for being here, and then thank all the other sponsors for that bought all those books. I have a granddaughter who's one of the kindergartners, and it's amazing to have those books and them being able to learn to read. It's just, I don't remember it as a parent as much as I'm now experiencing as a grandparent.
And Mr. Parker and board members, our next recognition of the evening is in proud celebration of our very own Superintendent, Dr. Detloff, who was recently named to a prestigious leadership position. For many years, San Angelo ISD has been an integral part of the Equity Center, a nonprofit education organization that is based in Austin, Texas, the only one of which exclusively represents the interest of children and taxpayers across the state. The primary goal of the Equity Center is the fair treatment of our Texas children. Out of 1,030 districts statewide, Dr. Detloff was selected for this honor. In addition to his diligent focus on equity, this appointment is in part for the fiscally conservative approach San Angelo ISD has consistently taken with our budget and planning under his leadership, in alignment with the board and administrators. As Board President, Dr. Detloff looks to further their vision of students matter, taxpayers matter, equity matters. He is proud to assist in steering the course for an organization that helps to put state resources in the hands of students who need it most in meaningful, impactful ways, a task that is of particular importance coming out of the pandemic. We are proud to recognize Dr. Detloff for his leadership and continued service and dedication to the children of our district and statewide. He is a shining example of how at San Angelo ISD, our people make the difference, and we look forward to seeing the great work he does as the Board President of the Equity Center. Please join me in congratulating Dr. Detloff on this well-deserved honor and thanking him for his willingness to help guide the Equity Center and champion its worthy goal and vision.
Thank you, Whitney. Also, I completely recognize that I would not be asked to serve in this capacity if it weren't for the fiscal leadership of our board the last 17 years and the financial transparency that we provide in SAISD, as well as the work of Dr. McFarland, the Business Office, and his predecessor, Dr. Jeff Bright. So all those components working together has provided a lot of trust in San Angelo ISD, and it's an honor to serve in that capacity. Thanks.
And I do believe we have one final recognition Mr. Parker was going to address.
Every time I hear Mr. Parker, I'm jumping because I'm not used to hearing my name called out. For years and years since I've been on the board, it's Mr. Lehman. And Mr. Lehman, all of us that know Lanny, the one word that will describe him as extraordinary are extra-ordinary. He's been on our board now from 2002 to 2021. That's 19 years. I haven't researched that to know for certain, but I would bet all the money I own that that's more than any other person in the history of SAISD has ever been a member of the board. I know I could win this bet, and that would be that there hasn't been anybody that's been on the board that's ever served President for as long as he did, for 16 years, from 2005 till this year. So he really is extraordinary. He's been a mentor to all the board members that have served under him or with him. He's been instrumental to me and as well as others to encourage us to keep running. When we probably all had, when we got on the board, thought we would be on one term, at most two terms. He was instrumental to me getting on the board 16 years ago when the board was thinking about appointing someone, and he took me to lunch to discuss that with me and encouraging me to accept and get on the board. He is a humble servant leader, and he leads by example. He's guided our board through three bond elections and two superintendent searches, and now even though he's stepping down as Board President, he is still going to continue serving on our board. Our board policies do not include any policy that discusses President Emeritus, and I'm not going to discuss that as to move that we have such a policy because I don't think it will, it may not ever come up again. But unofficially, I'm going to think of Lanny as President Emeritus of our board. Now, some of you may not understand what that means or what that title would consist of. So I'm going to, I found a policy in a pretty prominent university that had that policy, and so I read their policy, and I'm going to read it to you, but I'm just going to insert SAISD rather than for the university. And I think as I read it and you understand what President Emeritus is, you'll see that this very aptly describes our board president, that's leaving now, Lanny Lehman. So it goes like this. "The Board of Trustees may grant President Emeritus status to a SAISD Board President who is retiring or has retired from the position of President. President Emeritus status should be reserved to honor a SAISD Board President who is retiring or has retired and has provided outstanding and distinguished service to the school district and has served as Board President for at least 10 years. Outstanding and distinguished service is defined as service which goes beyond the normal duties and responsibilities of the appointment and which has had extraordinary impact on the school district and broader community. Such service contemplates that the individual demonstrated exceptional commitment and contributions to the school district exemplifying the high standards of personal and professional integrity, civic responsibility, vision, and leadership." And that's Lanny Lehman. So I'm going to ask all the board team to join me here in front of the podium, and we're going to ask Lanny to come down, and we have a small token of our appreciation that we want to recognize Lanny Lehman for 16 years of devoted service as President of the School Board of San Angelo Independent School District, Board of Trustees. This is my first time to see what we're giving Lanny, and it says, "SAISD's Lanny Lehman in appreciation for your dedication and contributions to the children of San Angelo through 16 years as San Angelo ISD School Board President, 2005 to 2021." Can I say something, Max?
Briefly. I think Chairman Emeritus means that you're really old. I would start by that. The other thing, and I've said this a number of times publicly, I don't know how many boards that anyone could serve on that are elected boards that could be any better than what I've had the privilege of serving with and had the opportunity to work with than this board. And that board's changed through the years, but in every case, and you can go on just about any newspaper these days and find out that school boards are fighting with their administrative team, or they're fighting with each other, and that just never happened with this board. And the reason why it doesn't happen is because people that choose to run for this board choose to do what's best for kids, for children, and that happens in every case. Do we always get along? Yes. Do we always agree? Not always, you know, but we always respect one another, and that's the difference that boards make if they are, if they run efficiently and effectively. So I'm honored to be called an Emeritus. I'm honored to have served for 16 years. People who don't know this should know that the Board President serves at the
This is my first time to see what we're giving Lanny, and it says, "SAISD's Lanny Lehman in appreciation for your dedication and contributions to the children of San Angelo through 16 years as San Angelo ISD School Board President, 2005 to 2021."
Can I say something, Max? Briefly. I think Chairman Emeritus means that you're really old. I would start by that. The other thing that, and I've said this a number of times publicly, I don't know how many boards that anyone could serve on that are elected boards that could be any better than what I've had the privilege of serving with and had the opportunity to work with than this board. And that board's changed through the years, but in every case, and you can go on just about any newspaper these days and find out that school boards are fighting with their administrative team, or they're fighting with each other, and that just never happened with this board. And the reason why it doesn't happen is because people that choose to run for this board choose to do what's best for kids, for children, and that happens in every case. Do we always get along? Yes. Do we always agree? Not always, you know, but we always respect one another, and that's the difference that boards make if they are, if they run efficiently and effectively. So, I'm honored to be called an emeritus. I'm honored to have served for 16 years. People who don't know this should know that the Board President serves at the, at the board's discretion. So, technically, we could change presidents, we'll let Max know this later, we could change presidents every month if we wanted to. We could have, you know, some board member that's unhappy with Mr. Parker's service could say, "Well, we'll just kick him out and do something else."
Do I hear a second? Okay.
Most of the years that I served as president, everyone else was just willing to let me serve in that capacity. So, thank y'all for letting me serve in that capacity. Thank y'all for accepting me as a, as a board member, and certainly, as we move forward, I'm excited to see how Max leads our board and how those who are new officers perform in those responsibilities. So, thank you. Thanks for this honor, Max.
Mr. Lehman, I know there may be additional comments from our fellow board team, but I just want to say thank you and provide a word of thanks, and I won't look at you in case I get misty-eyed, I'll look over this way. But just, you know, this is starting my seventh year as superintendent, and our board is known statewide just for being consistent, high-quality individuals that value kids. And that is, that is known across our state. And I just want to say it's no coincidence that, that Mr. Lehman has been a leader in the business world, a leader in the community, a leader for our school district, because he has the passion for doing what's right for students. He's a person of faith. He leads with integrity, and he leads with trust. And he has set the bar high for me. He has high expectations along with our Board of Trustees to say, "Carl, this is what we expect academically for our students. We expect you to get us there. Now, what do you need? What can we help you with? What supports and structures do you need to make sure that all our kids are successful?" They believe that not only for student academics, for staff. How do we have a culture of acceptance? How do we have a culture that helps teachers teach and practice their pedagogy in a safe environment that, you know, is going to create a great culture of learning for all of our students? So, I just want to say thank you, Mr. Lehman, because I'm a better person, father, and leader because of you.
And with that, we are, meeting's adjourned. Let's go on a high point. Let's stop. The good thing is, he's still here, you know, so. All right. We're now with our agenda. We have our minutes that we need a motion to approve, the minutes for May 10, 2021, and May 17, 2021.
Motion approved.
Second. Have a motion by Mr. Dindel, a second by Dr. Kingman, to approve our minutes, the special finance pre-agenda meeting for May 10, 2021, and our regular board meeting for May 17, 2021. Through any discussion, any public comment? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed say the same. Motion passes. I didn't have anyone sign up for public comment that I know of. Anyone here for public comment on something that's not on our agenda? All right, then we'll go into our reports. Dr. McFarland, is there anything you want to report on student enrollment?
Mr. Parker, you didn't jump at all there. Dr. Dethloff, the members of the board, I just wanted to get an opportunity to give an update on the attendance, and it gives you a little opportunity to update you a little bit on school finance while I'm doing that with some of the federal funding that's come about and some just updated information with that. We ended the six, six weeks period with a 92.28 attendance percentage. That put us for the total year on an average of 92.72, which when compared to last school year, we're down about three points. We were 95.61 last year. Okay, so that's the attendance percentage, down about three points this year from what it was a year ago in the non-COVID year. And then our enrollment numbers, as you've had that report monthly, we ended the school year with a total enrollment of 13, 822 was the final number on the last day of school. And that's comparatively down to about 635. The comparative number is the 25th Monday of last year because that was the last day pre-COVID time that we had classes. So, last year only went to that time, didn't go to all the, all the way to the end of the school year. So, some funding information that goes along with attendance, just for update information. Before I was, I was, spoke to you previously in a previous board meeting about SRR3 funds and some of the usage there. And just as a reminder, SRR1 funds came to us at the end of, of last school year, and it was strictly a, an amount that was a replace and take back. So, what they did was they gave us $3 million in federal funds, and then they deducted $3 million from state funding. So, it was a complete just wash there. SRR3 funds that I've spoken about previously, those are still in play. Those are things we've just now ended up, a survey that our communications team helped with and our curriculum instruction team helped with, with a survey to gather input from the required stakeholder groups that we were looking for. And so, those conversations are still happening. And the thing that I'd mentioned before was SRR2 funding had not been released yet, and that has since happened. They have released the SRR2 funding. For San Angelo ISD, that looks like in the range of about $14 million of SRR2 money. However, because the district has been held harmless for all of the lack of attendance, and all districts in the state will have be, have been held harmless for their lack of attendance, the way the state is going to recruit that is reduce your SRR funding, SRR2 funding by the amount that they're paying you for the whole harmless portion. What that comes to for San Angelo ISD is about $6.2 million. So, out of that $14 million, you subtract a little over $6 million, and then the rest will come to the district as SRR2 funds, similar to how we can use what I've mentioned to you before, an SRR3 fund. Any questions I can answer about attendance or the usage of those funds?
SRR2 and SRR3 funds are applied for separately, or can they be done in conjunction?
They're applied for separately, and they have different timelines. Actually, the SRR2, even though it came out later, I've got two years to work on that. We've got next year, and then the '22-'23 year is when it ends. Okay, so we've got till the end of '22-'23 on that 8 million. The SRR3 funds, even though they came out earlier, have a longer timeline. They go to '23-'24, so the end of '24, that money needs to be gone.
That money needs to be, go ahead, Ted. That money needs to be spent by then, or it needs to be, when is the application for the SRR2 funds?
The SRR2 funds, that application's open now. It's, it'll go into, I believe, the end of August for that. And then the SRR3 fund, did you say SRR2?
SRR3 is end of July, correct?
End of July for SRR3. SRR2, that just came out. We've got till August to get that application.
So, the combined, combined amounts, approximately $30 million because of the SRR3 was, excuse me, yeah, the SRR3 was $22 million, correct?
Well, the, the total amount for SRR3 is $32 million. The total amount for SRR2 is $14 million, but with, yes, minus.
Net of eight, almost eight, yeah. Right, so 40 million total.
About 40 million, yes, sir.
Sorry, one last question. The restrictions, just to make sure I write this, restrictions for SRR2 appear to be similar to the restrictions for SRR3.
They are, exactly. Yes, pretty much. Anything else I can answer on those?
Dr. McFarland, I'll just add some, from some of your earlier comments, that, you know, one of the, I guess, paradox of this gift of funds is that we are really bolstering those academic structures that our Board of Trustees has provided us the last couple of years to, to shore up some of the, the learning loss, as well as our academic gaps that we're having. So, through some of our support services, we are, you know, almost doing these on steroids. The interesting thing about this amount of money is, you've heard my earlier comments about those that are entering or not entering the teaching profession. So, I believe the last time I mentioned that there are about 44,000 classrooms in the state of Texas, and only 17,000 teachers that are certified are coming out of college prep to fill those 44,000 classrooms. Again, only about 3,000 of those, 17,000, only 3,000 are minority candidates. So, as we look to mirror your community's demographics and hiring, that being said, is we've got a great plan and a structure for interventionist at all levels, but we simply can't find the personnel to place in these positions. Also, we have to be real cautious not to strip our master teachers from the classroom as we move forward. So, it's kind of a paradox as we look at these funds, but they are certainly a gift, and we, we believe that we can shore up some of the learning loss due to these funds.
And this might be a question for someone else, but I'll ask you. Towards the end of the year, almost throughout the entire year, we were down about 550 students. In the last four to five reports, the last four or five weeks, that increased to about 635 students. So, I'm curious why we had more students in the last month choose not to attend than we did previously, and whether that other district saw the same type of decline in the last six weeks of school.
Yeah, from what I've seen historically, from where, from different districts I've been as well as San Angelo ISD, typically, your last six weeks of school has your least amount of enrollment total.
Yeah, but in comparison to last year, we're down, we're still down more students than we were, I mean, we're down 635 compared to last year, as opposed to 550 compared to last, over the same period. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. And as far as what was the drop-off there, I couldn't give you a specific accounting for that.
Lanny, I went back and looked at 29, whatever, the last year we were actually in school.
Right.
And our fifth, six weeks, or six, six weeks, we lost 100 kids. So, I think the fact that we're holding the, the, it was like 88 kids, I think, that we lost at that point in time. So, I think the fact, the matter that we're using our March 20th date for our attendance compared to the end of school year.
That makes sense.
Is partly the number.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense.
One last question, Dr. McFarland. On the, on the immediate use of the SRR3 funds, I'm just, correct me if I'm wrong, but 25% is going immediately to learning loss?
A requirement of 20%.
20%.
Goes to learning loss. One of the things we've done through the survey and just gathering data from principals and constituent groups is gathering that information and looking at where the focus points are. The addressing of interventions for learning loss was a high priority on that list, and one of the things we've been doing as a cabinet team, looking at different areas, is likely we're going to spend more than 20% on that, on that little category.
Sure, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McFarland. Okay. I don't see, Dr. Ritter is not here, and so do we have any, is there anybody giving a report on academic programs?
Yes, sir.
There they are. Okay, good, good.
Okay, we just wanted to talk about some things that we're doing over the summer. And one of the things that we are doing is with San Angelo Reads is a summer book patrol, and I know there's been a lot of talk about that, so we want to kind of explain what we're doing throughout the summer. So, what we're doing is we're going to continue that community-wide literacy initiative with San Angelo Reads, with our, continue that partnership to promote reading and encourage reading throughout the summer months. We know that during the summer, sometimes there's some learning loss, so we want to keep that going throughout the years. A lot of times, when you go for summer vacation, school's over, yay! But we want to continue that and build that love of reading and literacy, and we know that it can help with that learning loss post-COVID and for summer. So, with that, we have a few tactics that we want to do, and one of them is weekly book deliveries by our San Angelo ISD people. And so, what we're doing is every Wednesday, we are going and delivering books to homes to all of our school-age kids and our elementary-age kiddos. And then, another thing that we are doing is we're having pop-up events. We've already had one. We had it at Bradford on June the 16th, and we'll have another one at McGill for this side of the town, and we'll have that July 16th. So, if you want to come out, we'll put you to work for sure. And another thing that we're doing is just keeping that connection with the campus and the students, with our principals. Our principals are doing read-alouds, and so we'll have those on our Facebook, our San Angelo ISD Facebook. So, this is a quick little minute video that we want to share with you, and this is one of our weekly deliveries.
She looks like what about to go down?
Hi, Bella.
Hey, hey! You're gonna love it! Check it out, check it out, check it out!
And then we got a book pass. We encourage you to take it.
So, thank you, Maddie.
She's like, "I get something too!" Keep on reading! Yay, bye!
So, as you can see, we don't leave anyone out, even our, the siblings that are in the household, we also give them something too. So, what we did, we started on June 9th, like I said, every Wednesday, and our principals came out. So, this is like our first week, and we have Al Toloma, and we have the principal that is there in that first picture, and then we have Dr. Ryan from Lamar, and then we have Ms. Tyner from Reagan in the next picture. And here's a couple of more with Ms. Hernan and also Ms. Tyner, and these were like our first week visits. And then, so week number two, we have Goliad that's in the first picture with Ms. Claypack, and then in the second picture, we visited with Austin family, and the assistant principal came along on that ride, and Ms. Goodnight got to be a part of that. So, next was our summer book pop-up patrol event, and that was in, that was June 16th at Bradford. And as you can see, a lot of characters came when, yes, we see Ms. that was there that read a book in Spanish, correct? A book in Spanish for us, and you see the HEB guy, and also the Nuff from our book that we gave away from HEB. And we had some STEM activities, as you all got to see at one of our last, our last events that we had here at a board meeting. And so, they did some STEM. We had snow cones. You can't beat a good Bahama Buck snow cone, and readers, and then our characters and STEM. So, we had a lot of fun on that day. It's hot, but it's okay. They still came out and enjoyed the fun. We are going to have another event that's going to be July 16th, and that's going to be at McGill with some of our same partners on that day. And some of our partners were, of course, HEB, Bahama Bucks, Kixi, United Way. Those were some of our partners in the community that helped us with those. And then lastly, we're doing our summer read-alouds by principals, so keeping that connection. And here, we have Crockett, and we also had Bonham and Holloman, San Jacinto and Bel Air, and we expect to have every one of them by the end of the summer. And so they did some STEM, we had snow cones, you can't beat a good Bahama Buck snow cone, and readers, and then our characters in STEM. So we had a lot of fun on that day. It's hot, but it's okay. They still came out and enjoyed the fun. We are going to have another event that's going to be July 16th, and that's going to be at McGill with some of our same partners on that day. And some of our partners were, of course, HEB, Bahama Bucks, Kixi, United Way. Those were some of our partners in the community that helped us with those. And then lastly, we're doing our summer read alouds by principals, so keeping that connection. And here, we have Crockett, and we also had Bonham and Holloman, San Jacinto and Bel Air, and we expect to have every one of them by the end of the summer, so making those good connections with our principals. And kids love seeing their principals read. So just some special thank yous from our partnerships, and that's Vivid Pop Balloons. So we get to have the balloons on our little patrol. So we're, that's really exciting. Kids like seeing balloons. HEB, Bahama Bucks, all of our elementary principals, our San Angelo ISD administrators that, that come with us on some of these stops at homes. You guys are all welcome if you want to come. I can recruit a little bit. And then United Way of the Concho Valley. So special thanks to them, and Scholastic Education that allows us to do those read alouds and give us really good discounts on getting some of those books in the hands of kids all through the summer. And so that's kind of a really good segue to some of our summer school programs that are happening that Shelley Huddleston's going to share with us around literacy.
And Ms. Black and Ms. Huddleston, as you guys are making that transition for our television audience and those that are viewing our board meeting after the fact via our saisd.org webpage, I just want to acknowledge and highlight again, that was our newest board member, Lupita Arroyo, who was serving the Bradford community and other communities. And I just want to acknowledge and recognize, one of the reasons that she was elected to serve our community is because of her, her efforts at being child-centered and wanting what's best for all kids in San Angelo. So I just want to highlight that, and whether she was a board member or not, she would have been at that event, but that's a, a great, just a great acknowledgement of her, her work as a new board member. So thank you, Ms. Arroyo.
Yes, thank you. It was really hot out there that day, so you know, those that sweat together, stick together. Maybe literally, but anyways, it was really great. So thank you for being out there, and thank you Ricky and Ashley, Whitney. The, just the whole emphasis that we've had this year on literacy has been outstanding, and what we've tried to do over the last several years, not only make literacy important, but make reading fun. And so just the things that are happening this summer with these book patrols, these pop-up events, we're really trying to make literacy a fun event and something that just gives kids that lifelong love of reading. So we appreciate you all so much and the effort you have given there. And I just wanted to give a very brief academic report concerning summer school, because again, we've really tried to focus a lot on literacy over the summer. So I just wanted to update you to let you know that one of the new programs that we've never done before is Jump Start for high school and middle school. So our two high school Jump Starts, Central High School had 65 students who came for high school Jump Start, and Lakeview had 40. So those are kids who are entering the ninth grade, who got a chance to have some one-on-one time with the principal and with staff to really learn a lot about high school. We have had three different weeks of middle school Jump Start, and we've averaged 50 students per week at each one of our middle schools. So that's a really great opportunity for those incoming sixth graders to spend some time with staff and with teachers, and so that's been a really consistent program. This is the last week of that program, but we are very excited about what we've done there. We've offered credit recovery and high school EOC preparation, and we've had over 200 kids at both high schools participate in that. So a lot of our high schoolers are regaining some of the credits that they were struggling with during COVID and also preparing to take EOC exams. And then with our elementary campuses, this to me is just really exciting because we tried to focus just on fun literacy events for K1 and 2. San Jacinto has had 142 students, Crockett 105, Bradford 103, and Austin 101. So we have had a total of 491 students, with some who actually came in last week that we didn't get their totals. So I'm going to say easily over 500 students that we've had in our elementary summer programs, just focusing on reading. So I wanted to leave you with that information, that we have really pushed forward with accelerated learning this summer, and in the process, we've fed a lot of kids through our child nutrition department as well. So I wanted you to celebrate with us the good things we've been able to do this summer for kids.
Thank you, Ms. Huddleston. Do we have anything, anyone speaking? Shelley, are you speaking on Goodfellow or Partnership with Goodfellow? Are you coming on up for the Essa Consolidated?
I'm coming for the Essa, but I will tell you that Goodfellow right now is doing some STEM camps this week, and I'm sure that some of our students from our district are part of that, and that's exciting, so.
Okay. All right, well, tell us about the Consolidated Federal Grant Plan application for Essa.
Okay, I will. Members of the board, superintendent, and audience, I am here to report on the Essa Every Student Succeed Act grant. Raquel Taunton is the Director of our federal programs, and she's on vacation this week, so I'm elected to do this report. Essa funds are federal funds that flow through the state to local education agencies, that's us, the district. We are required to provide the public with an overview of the plans for the title monies for the upcoming school year, listen and consider comments prior to submitting the Essa application, and that is this opportunity. There are federal requirements that have to be met. Money has to be reserved for homeless students, parents and family engagement, private nonprofit services, contracted services, and indirect costs. Our first part of the Essa grant is the Title I Part A, Improving Basic Programs. Our planning amount for the 21-22 school year is $4,191,052. The purpose of Title I funds is to provide supplemental resources to maximize student academic outcomes, focusing on students at risk of not meeting the state academic assessment standards. A large part of these funds support our pre-K program. They will be used to staff instructional coaches at elementaries, staff paraprofessionals at our Title I schools, provide professional development, instructional materials, and equipment such as devices, laptops, Chromebooks, app, what's the other one? iPads, thank you! There is also, this is also where parental involvement activity is on campus. This is where the funds come for that. Title II Part A, Preparing Training and Recruiting High-Quality Teachers and Principals. Our planning amount for the 21-22 school year is $481,164. The purpose of these funds is to provide to, to improve the quality and effectiveness of teachers and principals. Title II funds are used to provide professional development and instructional coaching that align with the district learner educator profile. They are also used to support leadership coaching for principals and curriculum writing. Title III Part A, English Language Acquisition, Language Enrichment, and Academic Achievement. Our planning amount for this one is $71,023. The purpose of Title III funds is to ensure English learners, including immigrant children, gain English proficiency and develop high levels of academic achievement in English. These funds are used to provide bilingual aids, professional development, and bilingual curriculum and supplies. Title IV Part A, Student Support and Academic Enrichment. Our planning amount for the 21-22 school year is $313,078. The purpose of these funds is to provide supplemental resources to maximize student academic outcome, focusing on students at risk of not meeting the state academic assessment standards. That sounds very similar to the first part, doesn't it? The Title IV funds will be used to continue to staff the Director of Social and Emotional Learning, Professional Development, STEM Resources, Technology. This is sometimes where we purchase the, the cameras for our buildings. It's a lot of safety under Title IV. Title I SIG, School Improvement Grant. The planning amount for our 21-22 school year is $70,000. SIG funds are used to improve academic achievement in Title I schools that are identified as comprehensive support and improvement campuses. These funds will be used to support part-time interventionists for reading and math at the elementaries identified for SIG funds and engage to learn professional developments for principals. And Ms. Huddleston, can you tell me how many SIG campuses we have? Okay, eight SIG campuses. Seven, okay. And our last one? So our last one is, really this is an opportunity for the audience or anyone to, if they have any comments about the Title Funds. I will tell you, Title Funds are designated for campuses that, that have over 40% free and reduced students, campus, students that are eligible for free and reduced lunches, meals, I guess is the best way to put it. So, so all of our campuses don't qualify for that. We have four campuses that are not Title I funds funded, that is Bonham, Lamar, Santa Rita, and Central High School is also not part of our title-funded campuses. So are there any comments? Anything anyone wants us to consider? And if not, we'll move forward with applying for the application.
So that's, this was just a public hearing for this, and then now, after you have the hearing, then we'll apply for the application.
Yes, sir.
No action needed by our board.
No action.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We've got, before we go forward, there are consent items, this may be a good time to mention this. Ms. Holland, is this sure going to be your last meeting?
It is, yes, sir.
All right. Well, I just want to say, we had a last, at a pre-agenda workshop, prior to the pre-agenda workshop, we had a reception for Shelley Holland, and there was many there that spoke on her behalf, and I just want to mention this briefly. I think you've been here 14 years, and I'll say a little bit what I mentioned last week, and that was when we hired Dr. Carolyn Bonds, she had mentioned that she wanted to bring her Assistant Superintendent with her, and that was Shelley Holland. And we had a little bit of an idea from our interviews, what we were getting with Dr. Bonds, and we were very excited about that. We did not know Shelley, and it's been a, it's just been something that was just a joy to have you, and you've been such a big part of our, not just the way you've helped us in administration, but for our board team, where most boards talk about, they're a board of, team of seven or eight, they hope that they're including their superintendent. We've included several of our administrators on all, many of our trainings, so sometimes we're a board team of 15 or more. And Shelley's been a part of almost all those trainings that we've had for the last 13, 14 years. So she is a problem solver, she's somebody that's just been invaluable, I'm sure to other administrators, she just really gives of herself, and we're really going to miss you, and we really appreciate, you know, we, we weren't sure when Dr. Bonds retired, you were thinking about retiring then, and you stayed, you know, what, it's been another four or five years? How long have you been superintendent?
Starting seven.
Seven, so good. So we had talked to you about, this would be a good time for you not to retire right now, because Dr. Detloff is going to need some help, the board's going to need some help with our transition, and you stayed, and we really appreciate you staying those extra seven years. And I, I mentioned to her at, right before the meeting, that she needs to consider, we, I asked what she was going to do in her retirement, she could come up with things to do for like two or three months, we said, I said, well, why don't you just take six months off and come on back, and at the end of six months? So I don't think she's considering it very strongly, but anyway, we just want to recognize you, Shelley. I wanted to do that publicly with our audience, that you've been a huge part of, of most of the years that I've been on the board, and we're really going to miss you, and we really appreciate you, and we hope your retirement goes very well.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda is our consent item. We have consent items A through J. Do I hear a motion to approve, or does anyone want to take any of those items off the consent?
Motion to approve.
All right.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Mr. Lehman and a second by Mr. Dindell of our consent agenda. That is, A part is consider donations, B is consider approval of quarterly investment report May 31st, 2021, C is consider approval of bids for the Child Nutrition Department for the 2021-2022 school year for warehouse products, D is consider bid, excuse me, bid 21-008 for letter jackets, E is consider bid number 21-011, Central High School radio system, F is consider superintendent's recommendations for personnel for school year 2021 and 2022. And did we get a supplement on that also? So that'll be included also. G, consider Tasby Board Policy Update 117, H, consider Board Policy GKD Local, I, consider District of Innovation Plan Renewal for 2021-2026, and J, consider delegate and alternate delegate for Tasby Convention. All these topics were discussed last week and placed on our agenda, I mean, on our consent agenda. Do we have any board discussion on any of these items? Do we have any public comment on any of these items? If not, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say the same. Motion passes. All right, next on the agenda is consider bills, accounts, and financial statements for May 2021.
Motion to approve bills, accounts, and financial statements for May 2021. And just as a reminder, all these bills, accounts, and financial statements were discussed at our pre-agenda finance meeting last week and are available under Financial Transparency on our district website for review.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Dr. Kingman and a second by Mr. Gallegos. Do we have any board discussion on this? Is there any public comment? All in favor say aye. All opposed say the same. Motion passes. Next, consider proposed amendment for district official budget for the general fund.
Yes, sir, Mr. Parker. The budget amendment that's before you tonight, anytime there is a change in functions of movement of money in the adopted budget, that requires board approval. The amendment that's before the board members tonight for consideration results in a bottom-line net zero change in expenditures or revenues for that matter. And so what you're doing is moving, you're increasing Function 11 by 6275, you're decreasing Function 13 by 930, Function 21 is decreased by 400, and Function 35 is increased by 12,359, and Function 41 is decreased by 19,164, all for a net zero effect on the overall expenditures for the budget.
Thank you, Dr. McFarland. Any questions for Dr. McFarland? This is something we do every month, we move things around to take care of our auditors, make sure we're doing things correctly. Is there any other board discussion on this? Any public comment? All in favor say aye.
We need a motion.
Well.
I'll move for approval.
Second. I'm moving right along, okay? You're delaying us, all right? All right, who made the motion? All right, Mr. Dindell made the motion, and then Dr. Kingman seconded it. Now, do we have any other board discussion or any public comment? All right, if everybody's ready? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say the same. Motion passes. Next on the agenda is our, Shelley Huddleston, Attendance Intervention Software.
Good evening, Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, members of the board. We spoke briefly about this last week, but I want to bring forward to you a recommendation. Attendance is fundamental, is fundamental to academic success. Decades of research show that students who are present and engaged are more likely to hit early learning benchmarks, be proficient readers by third grade, achieve higher math and ELA scores, and graduate on time. Furthermore, research shows that the effects of absent Furthermore, research shows that the effects of absenteeism disproportionately impact our most vulnerable students. The district will work with the vendor to implement a personalized intervention engagement program designed to address learning loss and support student success by preventing absenteeism in the classroom, reaching and engaging students' families, and connecting them to district supports, including our hard-to-reach or vulnerable student groups, and supporting key transitions. We find that when there's times when we're coming back to school, like from Thanksgiving break, from Christmas break, spring break, sometimes kids take a longer break, theram attendance. So supporting those transition times are important. We sent an RFQ, a request to vendors capable of doing this type of work, who are members of the TIPS Purchasing Co-op. In-class today met all of the requirements and offers the program we believe will reduce the number of absences throughout the year. And as Dr. McFarland was saying, we had about a 3% overall drop in attendance percentage-wise from last year to this year, and we talked about last week that every absent cost us about $50 per student, depending on the weight of that particular child's ADA. So we think that this is a good financial decision. So the administration is recommending that the board approve entering into a contract with In-Class Today for $114,580 for a one-year contract with an optional three-year agreement. So do you have any further questions about this?
Any other questions for Ms. Huddleston?
I'm just, no lawyers, just to make sure, I saw that it's an optional three-year, there's no fee for termination of it.
Correct, yes. As long as we do it 30 days before the end of the contract time, we can cancel.
And you did have a second bid.
We did have a second.
Last week, you were waiting for all the bids, so we did have two bids, and you're taking the one that is also happens to be the low bid.
Sir.
All right, any other questions? Any other discussion? All right, do I, I don't think I've asked for a motion.
I'll make a, excuse me, I'll make a motion that we approve entering into a contract with In-Class Today for $114,580 for one year with an optional contract for a three-year agreement.
I'll second.
Had a motion by Mr. Gallegos, and a second by Ms. Mysel Flint. Is there any other board discussion, or any other public comment? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion passes. All right, Mr. Underwood, Consider Board Policy EIC Local.
President Parker, Dr. Detloff, and Board of Trustees, it's my pleasure tonight to talk a little bit about policy, proposed policy revision to EIC Local, Academic Achievement and Class Ranking. Last week, we discussed this a little bit, but wanted to talk a little bit more about this this evening for our audience, viewing audience tonight. The purpose of the proposed revisions would be to encourage students to take high-level courses in middle school without impacting grade point averages, adversely impacting grade point averages, while still earning high school credit. Some of the background that we considered in these proposed revisions, we reviewed with secondary principals and our Tasby policy consultant, as we kind of worked through this process. Local districts surrounding SAISD have policies that calculate GPAs on courses taken in grades nine through 12 only, and in reviewing other districts across the state, about half employ to similar practice. The other half, of course, would be employing a practice where GPA is calculated on a high school course, no matter what grade level it's taken at. So the proposed revision that SAISD has considered would be to change that from where we're at to a nine through 12 only. This has been discussed by district administration for years past, and we were presented with a unique opportunity this year, as we were looking at the proposed policy change, because we had no students that were moving into that eighth grade that had already taken Algebra I as a seventh grader, and so it gave us a clean opportunity to make a revision to our policy without having to have multiple cohorts that were involved. So that's the reason, some of the background information that we considered as we were looking at this change. Here is the proposed revisions calculation. You will see that we did include this as a cohort, so for students in the graduating classes of 22, 23, 24, and 25, the district shall include the calculation of class rank, semester grades, taken at any grade level. And then beginning with the class of 25, the district shall include the calculation of class rank, semester grades taken in any grades, nine through 12, unless otherwise excluded. So you have a new policy revision at your desk for EIC Local, and I'm going to talk a little bit about why you have a hard copy tonight, because there was a small change in the next part we're going to talk about. Some of the considerations, again, to encourage students to take high-level courses in middle school for high school credit without adversely affecting GPA. Sometimes we have parents, since we have an open enrollment policy for our pre-AP Algebra I classes in middle school, a lot of times, parents will be pushing for kids to take those, sometimes when they're not ready, and so they feel that, sometimes they feel the academic pressures of that, and don't perform as well as they might want to, as their parents might want them to. So that was a consideration that we took into. Math, and especially Algebra I this year, demonstrated the biggest impact of learning loss from COVID-19. We saw that early on in the beginning of the pandemic, as we started to get data in from math, as well as other assessments that students were taking at the campus level, that math was really, was really suffering from that learning loss due to the pandemic. And a lot of times, we have students that transfer in, in seventh grade from out of district, having already taken that Algebra I, and sometimes that creates a little bit of inequity, so this is partly to address some of that. And then in looking at some of our data, about 20% of our kids that took Algebra I this year in the second semester earned a C or lower in that, in that Algebra I course. So those were some of the considerations that we took for that. The reason why you have a hard copy is, last week, I discussed with you, the pre-AP is a registered trademark, and so our pre-AP designation and our policy was needed to be revised. We came to you with a first revision of pre-advanced for that distinction, but upon further consultation with our Tasby policy consultant, we have come to the conclusion and recommendation that we want to change that to the term honors. So that's the reason why you have a hard copy change there, and that is reflected throughout the policy in about four different spots that is in that red line version as well. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Underwood, you mentioned the clean break and kind of a level playing field. So for example, our current ninth graders, 10th graders, 11th graders, they are under the former system, so there's no change.
Correct.
And so this clean break you mentioned would be for our current 7th graders?
Current 7th graders going into 8th grade, yes, sir. They'll be taking Algebra I for the first time, and that puts them on a level playing field as well, so that they are being, so that those groups are apples to apples, and the other one is oranges to oranges, so to speak.
I don't know if it's in here or not, but when you talk about advanced classes, is that your, what, when my children went to?
Those would be our AP classes, for lack of a dual-credit AP classes.
Dual-credit and AP, okay.
Those are those upper levels.
So you have your dual-credit and your AP, and then underneath that, we now have honors rather than pre-AP.
That is correct, yes, sir.
And I think you said, beginning in the class of 2025, it's 2026, right? This starts, that's what the paperwork says.
Yeah, 2026, yes.
Yes, okay. And for any parent or student that may be watching the broadcast, if this now changes their mind, that they may say, oh, I can take Algebra I in eighth grade this year and not have it count on my GPA, and they still have time to sign up for classes.
Yes, sir. In fact, we've already started working on some communication to go out to parents in relation to the name change, and in this policy change as well, so that we can reach out to some of those kids that might be interested in taking that now, so that we can make them aware and give them the opportunity to do so.
All right. Anyone else have questions for Mr. Underwood? Again, this is one of those items, we had quite a bit of discussion last week, so we wanted Mr. Underwood to present this, rather than just put it on the consent item, and I appreciate you being here to do that.
Yes, sir.
Any board discussion on this item? Do we have a motion?
Move for approval of the revisions to Policy EIC Local.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Dindell, and a second by Mr. Lehman to approve Board Policy EIC Local changes. Do we have any public comment on this agenda item? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And Shelley's back.
I am back.
I knew you wouldn't be gone long, good.
Members of the board, superintendent, thank you for allowing me to add the PAYS application to the agenda. It was not on the pre-agenda, because the application wasn't out at the time, but PAYS stands for Preparing Area Youth for Success. PAYS is an alternative education program serving as a dropout prevention recovery program designed to respond to individual needs of students. PAYS is a unique path for graduation for students who have not been successful in a traditional school setting. All students attending PAYS are under the same graduation requirements as students that attend Central High School and Lakeview High School, meeting the Foundation Graduation Program requirements, as well as all state assessment requirements. PAYS reopened in, in 2008-2009 school year. To date, there have been approximately 1,300 graduates. We are extremely proud of the success of this program, the commitment of our staff, and the efforts of our students. It is the administration's recommendation that the board approve the application to continue the PAYS under the Optional Flexible School Day Program for the 2021-2022 school year. There's any questions, I'll answer them.
Anyone have questions? All right, is there any other board discussion on this? And any public comments? And if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the board, make a motion to approve the administration's recommendation for the Optional Flexible School Day Program, OFSDP, to approve the PAYS waiver for the 2021-2022 academic year.
Your second?
Second.
Mr. Gallegos, thank you for your motion, and Dr. Kingman for your second. I've already asked if there's any other discussion, if not, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, or any opposed, the motion passes. And this last agenda, I don't know if there was, if this was something, Dr. Detloff, we were supposed to just look at, see if we had any changes, and it had to do with review board operating procedures and standards you gave it to us for, to look at?
Yes, sir. At our pre-agenda meeting, yearly, this, this agenda item appears, it's our operating procedures and standards that our Board of Trustees and team of eight utilize to conduct business. In that, just a quick review, you have communication with media, kind of the different arrangements of school board meetings, you also have superintendent evaluation, a board self-evaluation component, and then just procedures, timelines for budget development. So again, this is a yearly endeavor that we look at, just to make sure that we are up to date on our operating procedures and standards.
Did anybody have, notice anything that they thought we needed to change or amend? Or any other, anybody have any questions or comments? It just says on board action, it's something for us to review, so do we take, do we have any action that we need to take on this?
I don't think we take any action in terms of changing.
All right. Well, I would recommend, as we said last week, for all board members, if you haven't read it, to look at it, because it, it'd be something for you to look at, especially Lupita, you'll see things in there, and if you have any questions about that, be sure to let, let me know, or any other board members know. I'm going to try to take my copy out and keep it in my desk here, so I'll have it to review if something ever comes up, but, okay, thank you.
Max, can I also ask that we, I don't know if I've seen a copy of this recently, it's, refers to Board of Trustees Code of Ethics.
Well, you drafted it, you were our example.
Yeah, so if we can, if we could get a copy of that for all of us, it might be nice.
Okay, I'll, I'll ask Becky for that.
Okay, thank you. I think so, too.
Well, that concludes, concludes everything on our agenda. We're going to go into closed session for just a few minutes. Let me see if I can tell you all, we need to discuss real estate under 551.0, well, make sure I get this right, 551.074, I think, if I'm.
Two.
Two, okay, it's the number before it, okay. 551.072, real estate, 551.071, consultation with attorneys, those are the two that I remember. Was there anything else you can, we had Lanny that you can think of?
I don't think so.
All right, then we're going to take a few minutes, we'll go into closed session, we'll be back in a few minutes. All right, I'll call the board back in session. We're back from executive session, we took no votes, we took no action, and I think that's all we have, but Dr. McFarland, one thing I was going to mention to you, as far as future dates, would you let us know as soon as possible if there's going to be extra meetings that we're going to need in July and August, so that we will get that on our calendars? I know that's the budget time, and I need to, I personally would like to make sure I've got those dates down as soon as possible.
We're just adding, we've already, I've already communicated that with Becky, but the, the only day we're adding is, I can give it to you right now.
First week in August?
Actually, the last, we're getting down. So, because we're going to use that, that pre-agenda, yeah.
This is good.
August 30th will be the addition.
That's it, so we don't, don't have any other special dates in August. All right, well, thank you. If you'll get us those, Becky, I appreciate it. All right, anything else? Meeting's adjourned, thank you.